Go ahead and call the meeting for June thirtieth to order. This is a special call meeting. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Marvin Hightower.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you that we are allowed to serve the community in this way and that we can ask your wisdom, your guidance, your direction. So we ask that in the decisions that we have to make, that you would lead us and that you would guide us and that that we would even leave this place as friends and acquaintance. We pray God your blessings over the mayor and over the council and everybody involved. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Misty Kavanaugh.
Here.
Marvin Hightower.
Present.
Adam Townsend.
Here.
Larry Knobzinger.
Here.
Frank Stevenson.
Here.
Glenda Wade.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum.
All right, our first order of business is the minutes of June sixteenth.
This city council meeting was held on June sixteenth at two thousand and twenty-five at four thirty PM in the city council chambers. It was called to order by Mayor Kevin Cotton. The invocation was done by council member Frank Stevenson, the mayor, and all council members were present except for Marvin Hightower, who was absent at that meeting. We had approval of the minutes of June the second, two thousand and twenty-five. We had approval of bills and payroll. We had a fire department report, a police department report. We had council committee report where we had a motion to bid stormwater repairs for Lunsford Street was approved. We had a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a public street alley or way and authorizing the closing of the same. We had second reading where we approved an ordinance amending the city of Madisonville annual budget for the fiscal year July the first, two thousand and twenty-five through June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. We had a resolution to declare a piece of property on the east right-of-way of South Main Street as surplus property. That was approved. We had a resolution to transfer that surplus property to Bo's Holdings and to Jeff and Beverly Creek, which was approved. We had a permission to contract services from local businesses where city employees has an interest in said business. And then we also had a utility connection for one ninety-six Lennon Drive Lennon Road, which was approved for a utility connection. We had municipal road hate hearing and a motion to adjourn, which was approved.
Do we have any corrections to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
To a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes. Next, we have the approval of the bills and payroll.
We have the total general fund of five hundred and ninety-one thousand, five ninety-four thirty-one, total sanitation of one hundred and four thousand, six fifteen forty-two, total maintenance of five thousand, six thirty-four forty-six, total electric utility of forty-eight thousand, eight seventy-one seventy-seven, total water filter of one hundred and sixty thousand, two twenty-two sixty-four, and total wastewater collection and treatment of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, two eighty-eight ninety-one. We have an estimated bi-weekly payroll of governmental of fifty-six thousand, seven seventy-two, police of one hundred and seventy thousand, three seventy-eight, fire one hundred and seventy-four thousand, four thirteen, transportation thirty thousand, three oh eight, cemetery three thousand, three twenty-eight, park twenty-nine thousand, three oh four, sanitation of forty-eight thousand, five, maintenance garage eight thousand, one sixty-seven, light fund ninety-seven thousand, one ninety-nine, wastewater treatment nineteen thousand, two twenty-seven, wastewater collection of thirty-seven thousand, eight thirteen, water and filter of fifty-eight thousand, five eighty-one, for a total estimated bi-weekly payroll of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Do I have a motion to approve the bills and payroll?
So move.
For a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes. Next, we have a council committee report.
Mayor, at the special call meeting, both live and virtual, of the Tourism City Council Committee and the Tourism Advisory Board, there was one recommendation for funding that evening. And I would like to make the motion, the council approved forty thousand dollars to be spent at the Great Vine Recreational Trail Project that connects city park. This amount will be used to cover the P and L property survey, the purchase, as well as the road trails scouting into that property.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes. Next, we have new business. We have the second reading of the ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a public street alley or way and authorizing the closing of the same.
Be it ordained by the city of Madisonville, Kentucky as follows. Whereas the following described, street alley or way has been dedicated as a public street alley or way by specific reference thereto by deeds of record in the Hopkins County Court Clerk's office. And whereas the city of Madisonville desires to accept the dedication of said street alley or way so that it may same may be legally closed as herein provided. And whereas all property owners who abut the public street alley or way have consented in writing to the proposed closing of the street alley or way, and now therefore be it ordained by the city of Madisonville, Kentucky, that dedication of the following street alley or way is hereby accepted by the city of Madisonville. And the following findings of facts are made with reference thereto. And it describes the piece of property that was surveyed. All property owners in abutting the street alley or way to be closed are as follows. And we have Hopkins County Economic Development Corporation, Garrett Tomlinson, Kwong Lam, Ruby Junction LLC, Oak Street Row House Condominium Association. And written notice of the proposed closing was given to all property owners in abutting the public street alley or way being closed. And all property owners in or abutting the public street alley or way being closed have given their written notarized date consent to the closing and copies of the written consents are attached here too. Upon entry of this ordinance adopted by the city of Madisonville, the partial closure of the fault of the right-of-way, the property currently designated as right-of-way shall revert to Ruby Junction LLC or its successors and will be incorporated into the development project. Ruby Junction LLC shall assume all rights, responsibilities, and control over the property for future use and development. Accordingly, based upon the findings of facts herein and is hereby ordered and ordained that the public street alley or way described herein is hereby closed effective upon publication of this ordinance, a copy of this ordinance shall be filed of record in the Hopkins County Court Clerk's office as required by KRS eighty-two point four oh five subsection two.
All right, the councilman Townsend has stepped out as he has a conflict being a neighbor of that decision. So with that being said, do I have a motion to authorize the acceptance of the public street alley or way and authorize the closing of the same?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Are there any questions?
Chief and both the chiefs agree with that. No problems or nothing. I think we talked about it last time.
No issues or challenges from either?
Right.
All right, any other questions? Kim, can we have a roll call?
Misty Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Marvin Hightower.
Yes.
Adam. Larry Knobzinger.
Yes, ma'am.
Frank Stevenson.
Yes.
And Glenda Wade.
All right, motion passes. Next, on new business, we have a public hearing regarding the zoning map amendment of on Shamrock Drive. At this time, we will ask councilman Townsend to come back. You're already back. And we will call to order the public hearing and call it to order and confirm the purpose of this meeting is that it is for the zoning amendment that number two zero two five dash zero two. Kim, can we have a roll call?
Misty Kavanaugh.
Here.
Marvin Hightower.
Here.
Adam Townsend.
Here.
Larry Knobzinger.
Here.
Frank Stevenson.
Here.
And Glenda Wade.
Here.
All right, the city council is holding a public hearing to hear an appeal of the Hopkins County Joint Planning Commission's decision on zoning map amendment two zero two five dash zero two for the city of Madisonville. The purpose of this hearing is to gather factual evidence for and against the requested zoning amendment. After we've received a staff overview and a presentation from the applicant, we will conduct a sworn public hearing. Everyone who speaks will be required to state their name and address for the record and take an oath. Those in favor of the zoning amendment will speak first, followed by those opposed. Comments must focus on factual evidence relevant to whether this amendment should be granted or denied. Following the public input, the city council will deliberate and may take final action under KRS one hundred point two one one two H. It requires a majority of the entire legislative body to override the planning commission's recommendation. If that majority is not met, the commission's recommendation becomes final and effective by operation of law. That requires four city council member votes. At this time, we're going to hear from the city attorney, Hillary Croft.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to talk a little bit about what this framework's going to look like. So each speaker will have three minutes to present if you are having a public comment. So we've got somebody who's going to monitor that time while you're speaking, so don't be afraid if they're tapping you in saying you're getting close to your time. Another thing that I do want to point out is as far as what's the council's responsibility in making that decision today. So you just heard mayor read the KRS statute, which is controlling for the joint planning commission to make those decisions. They're going to follow that same guideline today. So in order for them to override the recommendation from the joint planning commission, they are going to have to find that it did not meet one of the following, that it did not agree with the comprehensive plan or that it did not have any major changes to the area to cause a change to the comprehensive plan. And there exists no need to amend that based off any anticipated issues that have come up with that plan. So they, each council member, I've asked them whenever they do do their vote, that they need to affirmatively state what their vote is and what's that finding so that we know that that what their ruling is on that situation. So we can make a finding of fact for later on. If you have any questions, you can revert to, we've got some staff up here, so if we need to deal with that, we can. But those that have signed up are going to be the only ones that would be allowed to speak today. Yes, Mandy does too, yeah.
With that being said, we're going to start with a staff presentation. Ms. Mandy Todd.
Andy, I do have to swear you in. If you would, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. All right, good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to give you an overview of the request. In your packet, you'll see a staff report, and I'm going to start with that. So the applicant, Mr. Ron Sanders, on behalf of the Wesley Group, applied for a zoning change from ag agricultural to zero lot line for a portion of parcel M dash eight dash one dash eight A. The applicant is requesting for five point two seven six acres to be rezoned from agricultural to zero lot line. The property is located at the end of Versnic, sorry, Shamrock Drive. It's the corner of Versnic and Shamrock Drive. The subject property is currently vacant and the proposed use would be up to twenty zero lot line homes. Next, I'm going to go over the purpose of agriculture, sorry, agricultural zoning. According to the comprehensive plan, ag is to include land that contains forest and agricultural activities such as crop production, raising of livestock, fruit and vegetable production, and pasture land, as well as public and semi-public development, including parks, cemeteries, and outdoor sports facilities. The purpose is to provide for substantial areas of contiguous farmland or areas in a natural state where little or no development has occurred. This classification also includes residential housing associated with farming. And next, I'm going to go over the purpose of zero lot line. According to Madisonville zoning ordinance, the purpose of a zero lot line district is to is intended to promote more efficient use of land as compared with typical single-family residential development and to introduce a type of housing design that is more affordably priced. The use of design principles allows for the integration and relation of the internal and external living areas by placing the dwelling units against one or more of the property lines, thus permitting outdoor spaces to be grouped and utilized at a larger scale. You'll also see the permitted uses for ag. Currently, the uses by right that could be done, you know, with no extra changes to the the zoning ordinance. Currently, the uses by right would be structures used for agriculture like farming, dairying, stock, and crop and plant raising, horticultural activity and tree farming, kennel, veterinarian clinic, and an animal hospital, single-family detached dwelling, an educational facility, religious institution, a public recreational facility, and a horse training track. Those are all things that are currently allowed at the property as it as it sits. Additionally, there are some uses permitted by conditional use permit, which would be a bed and breakfast, cemetery, funeral home, civic use, country club, nursing home, orphanage, and rehabilitation home, a junkyard, disassembly plant, an airport, commercial sawmill, accessory dwelling unit, and an RV park. Those are all the uses by right and conditional uses for ag zoning. And next, I'm going to go into the uses for zero lot line. The uses by right include a single-family attached and single-family detached dwellings, public recreational facility, including neighborhood playground, and a residential care facility. Those are the three things that are allowed in a zero lot line district. There are no conditional uses allowed in a zero lot line. Next in your packet, you'll see the the lot and building provisions for each zoning. The first one includes ag. The minimum lot size for an ag lot is five acres. The minimum lot width is three hundred feet. The front yard setback is seventy-five feet. Side yard is twenty-five feet per side. Rear yard is twenty-five feet. And the maximum building height is thirty-five feet. The lot and building provisions for zero lot line. Attached dwellings, two thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, three thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet for the exterior. That's for an attached dwelling. Detached dwelling is four thousand two hundred square feet. Minimum lot width is twenty-five feet for interior lots and thirty-five feet for exterior lots. For a detached dwelling, it's forty feet. The front yard setback is twenty feet. The side yard setback is ten feet for exterior lots per side. Rear yard setback is ten feet. And again, just like ag, the maximum building height is thirty-five feet. And next, it goes in, the staff report goes into comprehensive plan consistency. According to the two thousand and fifteen comprehensive plan, the future land use map identifies the property as agricultural. One of the city's goals in the comprehensive plan is to provide for a variety of housing types, including senior living, affordable living, and new growth areas. And next in the packet is the notice of the public hearing. These notices were performed in accordance with KRS. The notices were sent to adjoining property owners and a sign placed on the property on June sixteenth, and copies of all that is also in your packet. And you all received copies of all of the appeal forms through email. And next, it goes over the KRS requirements, which Hillary has already gone over. And so this is the staff recommendation that was made at the planning commission's public hearing. The staff recommended that the zoning map amendment is in agreement with the currently adopted comprehensive plan. A goal set forth in the plan is to provide for a variety of housing types, including senior living, affordable living, and new growth areas, as well as an economic change not anticipated in the comprehensive plan that is the need for housing in Madisonville. It also went on to explain, if the zoning map amendment were to be recommended, these following steps will still have to take place. A preliminary plat would need to be reviewed by the planning commission and the city engineer. The plat would then be presented before the planning commission and would need to be approved at a regular scheduled meeting. A pre-construction meeting would take place with design engineers, city engineer, and staff. All zero lot line developments must have a major development plan review. Prior to the completion of the required improvements, the developer may submit the final plat with acceptable surety. The final plat will be reviewed by the city engineer and planning commission staff. When all requirements are met, the planning commission director shall place the final plat on the planning commission agenda. The final plat will be approved or disapproved within ninety days of the agenda placement. Once approved by the planning commission, the plat will be recorded in the at the Hopkins County Clerk's office. And the last part of the staff report attachment was a part of the comprehensive plan and just a paragraph explaining how to use this document. The comprehensive plan, it says, this plan is the guiding document by which officials, decision-makers, developers, and residents can reference as development occurs. As such, the Hopkins County Comprehensive Plan should serve as the community's guide for future development and be the basis for all decisions about the location, quality, and quantity of future growth and its supporting infrastructure. Additionally, this plan is intended to be a flexible document and broad in nature. It should respond to changes or unforeseen circumstances that reinforce the vision and goals defined by the community. And then next in your packet, I included some maps of the area. And included in that map, Kim, it's the next one down, I believe, is the site plan.
The computer went crazy for a minute.
One more down. Okay, yeah. It's kind of a blurry picture, but you each have it in your packet. Is the site plan for the proposed development is up to twenty zero lot line homes. Zero lot line homes are all individually owned. They share a common wall. Some may share a common wall. But each home is individually owned. The lot is also individually owned. Also have some pictures that show where the development would occur. Right, yeah, right along. As a view, looking over behind that row of trees is is where the development would occur. The current zoning for the area is agricultural. The future land use map shows this property remaining as agricultural. And then next in your packet, you have some property deeds. I'll first start with the one that you have on top. It's a property deed. It's an agreement that was made into by Clifford Briggs and his wife Kathleen Briggs and Lake Shore Country Club. And you'll see some highlighted parts there on that deed. Says, whereas the parties heretofore have exchanged tracts of real property so that Lake Shore can construct an additional nine-ho's for their golf course and so that Briggs can construct a residential development adjoining said golf course. So when this was submitted, that appears to be that from the very beginning, there was an intent for a residential development for the property. You also have the meets and bounds for the five point two seven six acres that will be divided off from the larger tract. And one thing I want to touch on, I know there's been some question about the first time this zone change was brought through for a planned unit development. And there's been some question about, you know, the planning commission denied that unanimously, but then approved this second ask unanimously. And that's been some caused some confusion. I've placed in your packet what the first zoning map amendment request was for. It was for twenty-four point eight two acres, I believe. And the proposed development for that is also in your packet. The proposed development was for, bear with me, I believe sixty-eight homes. Sorry. Sixty-eight homes, I believe. And the new development is for twenty homes and for only five point two seven six acres. So it was a completely different ask this time around. The first time was for twenty-four point eight acres over sixty homes. This time, it's for five acres at twenty homes. So the planning commission felt that the original ask for the planned unit development did not align, did not fit. But they did feel like the second time around at a smaller scale with the five acres and twenty homes did fit into the comprehensive plan. And that was the difference in those two things. You also have in your packet the housing study that was done by Economic Development, which shows that in the three hundred thousand to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar range, a hundred and forty-two new homes. which shows that in the $300,000 to $475,000 range, 142 new homes are needed in this demographic. And in the $475,000 range to $650,000 range, the study showed that 191 new homes are needed in this range. You also have in your packet the legal notices that were mailed out, and the minutes and finding of fact from the planning commission's hearing. That's all my overview.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Todd?
I do have one question, Mayor. If this was to stay into fact, could this developer come back as well and request for the remaining property to be rezoned as this?
No, he could not. This 5.276 acres will be divided off from the remaining. The remaining portion of that property will remain ag. And so there can be no comeback later to ask. I mean, he could always come back and ask, but obviously, that's already been denied once before by the planning commission. He would have to bring it back for the remaining tract to be rezoned. But this approval does not mean that there can be anything else developed other than on that 5.276 acres.
If I might ask, the original development some months ago involved developing an area that was not contiguous to any existing residential housing in the area, whereas the current zoning map amendment is to an area that is immediately contiguous to the residential occupations of Lake Ridge Estates, Lake Shore, Buffalo Trace, and Lake Shore Country Club. So that is a direction that doesn't, is not contiguous to the current adjoining uses of land. Another thing, I wanted to ask a question is, if I'm correct, Lake Ridge Estates was until, what, 1999 or?
Yes, that's correct.
Was itself zoned, not agricultural, but conservation, I think, from, which is similar, but non-residential. And a zoning map request was made for that much larger parcel of non-residential property adjoining the Lake Shore, and that was granted and is now occupied over the years with much more extensive development than what's being requested.
That's correct, Frank. In 1999, that peninsula was rezoned. At the time, it was zoned conservation, which is, you know, similar to ag. And at the time, Madisonville had a different zoning layout. Now, where we have single-family, multifamily, at the time, we had an R1, R2, R3, I think all the way up to R5. And that was rezoned to R2 with no, I went back through the minutes, and there was no objection.
Which allowed them to have single-family residences, right, occupied.
Correct.
Mandy, just to be clear, this current tract was included in the tract previously, so it was contiguous to residential areas in the initial request?
The initial request was for the whole 24.
But it's still connected with residential areas in as well?
Yes, the bottom five-acre tract did connect, yeah. The other portion of the tract connected to Lake Shore Country Club.
But it was all still connected?
Yeah, it was one tract. That's right.
There's no change in, as far as that goes. It was and is still connecting to residential.
Any additional questions for Ms. Todd? Ms. Todd, do you have any additional staff that you would like to present?
Yeah, I actually have, if you guys are ready, I have Justin Lamb with me, who can speak on traffic, the water, things like that. I've asked Chief Bryan to come and speak about, you know, traffic is a big concern for people and safety. So Chief Bryan is here to go over that, and Chief Eli as well, for response to, you know, emergencies with the fire department.
All right, let's start with Chief Steve Bryan.
Afternoon, Mayor, council members.
Chief, I do have to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do. I do.
All right, Chief, state your name and your address.
My name is Steve Bryan. I'm the Madisonville Police Chief, and.
Not your address. Not your address.
Thought y'all was gonna tell the truth.
Go ahead, sir.
So Mandy reached out to me last week and asked me if I would come in and provide some numbers on traffic accidents in the area, and so we ran those. I'll provide that to you, and we also, I told her that we had, actually had our speed trailer out there about a month ago, so I've got that data as well. So I'll go over these three pages. The first two are going to be from the speed trailer. The very first one, I'll wait till Kim gets that up, it's going to be a graph that shows you breakdown of the number of vehicles and what, how fast they were going, in five mile-per-hour increments. So the graph, well, the timeframe, first of all, let me just start there. We put the trailer out May the 27th, and this was in response to a request from a citizen based off speeding cars. So the timeframe, it went out on May 27th, and we, report date ends June 10th, so that's 14 days. During that timeframe, of course, it's a 35 mile an hour zone, our trailer was sitting at the intersection of Shamrock Drive and College Drive. The average speed was 39 miles an hour. There were 3,574 cars that went through during that two-week span. So you can see the breakdown on the graph, that first bar that goes all the way to the top, that is the mile-per-hour, 36 to 40. So that's cars between one and five miles per hour over the speed limit. There are 2,400 cars in that category. The next one, that bar is much smaller, that's 41 to 45 miles an hour, and the next one is 46 to 50 miles an hour, and the last one is 51 miles per hour or more. So the next page is going to be the volume of cars based off the time of day. So it's pretty much what you'd expect. At the bottom, you've got the times, it's in military times. It starts at 1:00 a.m. and goes all the way through 10:00 p.m. And so, you know, it starts to get busy at about 6:00 or 7:00 a.m. It peaks at 4:00, 5:00 p.m., and then it really starts to die down after 8:00 or 9:00 And the last page is the accidents. So what I did, I had our analysts run all traffic accidents on Shamrock Drive in the last five years. So this is between June 25th of 2020 and June 26th of 2025. So we had 20 total accidents on Shamrock Drive. Got a little spike time-wise, about 7:00 a.m. and then about 6:00 p.m. Of the 20, seven were deer accidents. Two of these accidents were mirrors that hit from oncoming cars. And 11 were due to either improper lane change on Main Street or excessive braking. So on the map, you can kind of see where they were at. So several of them were at the intersection of Shamrock and Main Street. So considering the amount of traffic on that road in five years, I don't think that's a lot of accidents. Of the collisions that we did have, three of them, three of the 20 had injuries, and two of those were on, at the intersection of Shamrock and Main Street. So that's just a summary of the speed trailer data, and then our data that MPD keeps for accidents. Now, understand, the accidents, these are accidents that were reported. So anything that happened that wasn't reported, because we wouldn't have a way to track that. So, but that's the end of the data that I've got to share.
Any questions for Chief Steve Bryan?
But just doing the math, the average is four accidents per year on Shamrock Drive.
That's correct.
Any additional questions or comments for the chief? Chief, thank you very much.
Sir.
Chief Eli, would you care to raise your hand and state your name?
My name is Jason Eli, Fire Chief.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Chief, I think the question that Ms. Todd had for you was based off of fire response for that area, and if there were any issues pertaining to that.
We don't anticipate any issues that would come up due to the development or the change in zoning. We have stations that are in the general areas that can cover any response needs. Currently, our trucks respond from Station 3 on Industrial Court, and then also from Station 4, which is out on Hanson Road. And then we also would run an additional unit from Station 1.
You have any questions for Chief Eli? Thank you, sir. Next, we'll hear from Justin Lamb. Name and position, sir.
Sorry. Would you please state your name and your position?
My name is Justin Lamb. I'm the acting city engineer.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do. And I guess first and foremost, from ethical consideration, I need to disclose that a potential conflict of interest here, although I'm not personally managing the project, my firm does have involvement in the owner's side of this potential development. Just want that as a matter of record.
Sir?
I guess primarily, I'm here as a, offering to you all to answer any questions or answering response questions from a city utility and city infrastructure standpoint. The only thing I can note there is we currently have the infrastructure in place to service the community as proposed.
Questions for Mr. Lamb?
So in your estimation, would the water and sewer infrastructure be adequate to serve those additional housing units up to 20?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And considering, this is in your wheelhouse too, because it's been raised by some of the communications I've had, that concern about runoff to the watershed, to the lake. There's a fairly narrow strip of land there. Do you anticipate with the housing development that that would be any more consequential to environment there than the current residential occupation at Lake Ridge Estates?
Absolutely, any development could have potential impacts from a stormwater and water quality standpoint. I guess my response to that would be the city ordinances have in place regulations associated with how developments occur.
Okay.
So we have an MS4 permit we have to maintain, have permit considerations, and maintaining that permit that does water quality and quantity. So any development that would occur in this area would have to submit a development plan, which proposed an adequate plan to manage those.
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management and quality. And if those were not adequate, it would not be able to be approved by the city.
Thank you.
Sir.
Any additional questions for Mr. Lamb? Thank you, sir. Next, we will hear from the applicant, if he so chooses.
I need to be sworn in, too. Yes, you do. Do you care to raise your right hand, state your name and your address?
Ron Sanders, 2103 Versant Drive, Madisonville.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do. I really don't have much to add. We're just rezoning 5.2 acres from agriculture to hillside, and it'll provide housing for Madison. I'll make a note that in 1975, the population of Madisonville was 19,522. As of last year, what I looked at, it was 19,530 something. So in 50 years, Madisonville's population has actually declined slightly. So we need to be growing internally, and we're growing externally in the city. We've got houses being developed outside, but this is inside the city limits. So I appreciate your consideration. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Sanders?
You have a timeframe for the, how you say, up to 20. Is it, I mean, is it going to all be done at once, I presume?
Depends on what you tell me tonight.
Well, right, correct. Yeah, right, nothing goes if it doesn't get it right. Okay.
It's a long process to do.
Yes.
You've still got a lot of work to do on it to get it to fruition and.
A lot of hoops, right.
You've got to sell them, too, so that's a challenge. There's a lot of, there's a lot of challenges to developing a development, and it takes a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of expertise. You know, this is all professionally done. They've done a great job in planning it. It's a difficult place to build, but building in the city of Madisonville is tough, because there's a lot of regulations.
Yeah. One thing that strikes me, if I'm understanding what you're proposing, in my mind, what occurs is this is like having a dogwood villa with land that the person owns. Because they have two joint, you know, zero lot line units. They don't own the land there, as I understand it, but they own the unit. It's a single-family. It's that kind of, or maybe more extensive even, more square footage, but that's a visual sort of image that I have in the mind that would be fitted into that hillside.
Point out that 20 is the maximum, and it could be 16, 17, depending on how.
Sure.
The size of the homes that we put in there. They could be adjoining, where it'd be like a duplex, but they could also be on the opposite sides of the, and there would not be a duplex, but they will all be a townhome-type structure. The way they will work, the bottom floor will be a garage and drive-in. The second floor is your living area, and into the hillside, you go out the back of the second floor is the kitchen and the area, and there'll be a patio behind that that's covered, and it will be fenced, there'll be privacy fencing at the back, and you'll go up the hillside. And my view of that is it's a garden that you would have, a flower garden or raised vegetables or whatever you want to do. That's our vision, and it's to be incorporated into nature.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. With this, if this is approved by the city council, is there any intent by the development group to ask for a rezoning of the other agricultural land to a zero lot line?
Well, we've got to get this in and get it sold before you start doing anything else. So, you know, there's always, there's always a possibility that we'd come back and, you know, you can just tell us no, you know? So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, if you are for the development, I would ask that you line up against the glass wall by the podium, and we will call you up one at a time to be sworn in. And you would have had to have signed in to be able to speak. All right, Ms. Jennifer?
We have Sharon LaBelle first.
Ms. Sharon, if you would, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
And also, can you tell me your address?
629 Hanson Street.
This is a reminder that you will have three minutes to speak.
Over the last several years, I've been working with Ron because he purchased our original business here in town that provided a lot of temporary and permanent housing for people coming into our area. We have been so impressed with the work he has done and the housing that he has been able to give our community. Because I'm telling you, this is three years later, and I'm still getting calls from people saying, "Do you have anything that I can rent, buy, whatever?" And it just goes to show how desperate we're in need of housing. And when you have a developer that is willing to put such a substantial investment in our community, I think we should do everything in our power to support that. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sharon? Thank you very much.
Doug Leisure.
Doug Leisure. I live at 114 West Broadway.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay.
My name's Doug Leisure, and I'm here to speak on behalf of changing the zoning to allow for the Lakewood Point subdivision. Well, first of all, Ron Sanders owns the property, and unless there's some extreme overriding reason, Ron should be able to use this property in a fitting manner. Someone else just not wanting him to do it is not a good enough reason for that. Is this an appropriate project and an appropriate use of the property? Single-family homes are rebuilt. The lake is surrounded by single-family homes, both in subdivisions and single lots. So, this is a proven acceptable usage of this property. Will this degrade property values? And let me say, Ron's home is a stone's throw of this proposed development, and he has several nearby lots for sale as well. He does not want to reduce his own property values. If you wanted to put a hog parlor or a salvage yard in, that'd be a different story. These homes will not devalue the property more than any other single-family homes would devalue it in this area. Is this project needed? I heard Ray Hagaman, our former Economic Development Director, say many times that housing is desperately needed. And not to put words in the mayor's mouth, but I believe I've heard him say the same thing many times. In light of our recent Economic Development announcement, we now need housing more than ever. How many other major subdivisions are in the works? And can the city afford to stop 20 new homes? And what message will this send to other developers if this is stopped? Will the subdivision fit with our city services? Ron went to every city department, and they all agreed it would be no problem for the city services, and this falls in the city guidelines. And what does the planning, Joint Planning Commission have to say? It was unanimously approved. So, if you take the personalities and the politics out, this is a real easy decision for the city council. It's Ron's property. It's a fitting use of the property. It does not degrade the surrounding properties. The city needs it. The city departments and infrastructure can handle it, and the Joint Planning Commission approves. This is a very easy vote for the city council to approve this. Thank you very much.
Questions for Mr. Leisure? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Frank Williams. Mr. Williams, can you tell me your address?
2555 Club Court, City.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity. I'll reiterate just quickly a couple of comments that Doug made. The city is in desperate need of quality housing, as reiterated by Ms. LaBelle and the Housing Report and others. There just isn't any other subdivision this large going on in Madisonville that I'm aware of. This quality of housing. We currently have a developer willing to spend million, million and a half dollars to put in the infrastructure for this five acres. You know, 20 homes, $400,000, $500,000 piece, talking about $8 million worth of property taxes out there. As Doug said, it will conform. These are quality homes next to quality homes and next to vacant other lots that are under Ron's ownership. So, again, he will not want to degrade those values. And since we're speaking on behalf of the project and the opposition will come later, I'm gonna reiterate three main areas that have been concerned in the Planning Commission meeting. One was the traffic, which Police Chief just reiterated, that very low count of traffic accidents for over that period of time. It was told that, or informed that the city street was narrow. I went out there and personally measured the street in three different locations, and it's measured 19 feet in each one of them. US 41A beyond Wicks as well is 19 feet or 20 feet. So, it's one foot more narrow than a federal highway, and a lot more narrow than a lot of other city streets, county roads. So, it's comparable to the majority of the roads. The other issue that would probably be brought up is this could be a rental property. You know, it's a lakefront or a lakeview. Nice houses can be on VBRO or whatever that is, but just rental property. Mr. Sanders' covenants will have a restriction in there that if a homeowner did want to rent it, had to be a six-month minimum, six months. So, it's not gonna be a daily, a weekly, or a monthly rental. They will have to rent it for six months. I dare to say there's probably not a single house out in Lake Ridge that has a rental agreement in it when that subdivision was formed. And those homeowners are free to rent it on a daily basis if they wanted to. So, and then the third thing was a, should be an environmental statement issued or environmental impact study conducted, and I heard an environmental concern a little bit earlier. We're talking about 20 homes compared to Lake Shore's number of homes. Lake Shore didn't have to have an environmental impact statement. And I live next to Madisonville Country Club, so I'm not...
This time.
Okay. I will say, though, the homes compared to what the Country Club does, there's no comparison.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? Thank you, sir. Next, if you are in opposition of this amendment, I'd ask that you please stand in a line on the wall where Jennifer's at, if you have put your name on the list.
First speaker is Ronnie Locke. Mr. Locke, can you give me your address?
70 Shamrock Drive.
And would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Er, councilman. I'm Ronnie Locke, 270 Shamrock Drive. Been there for several years. I'm here to voice my opinion against the zoning amendment for Lakewood Point at the end of Shamrock Drive. Change will not be compatible with the area. I've lived in a housing project a lot of years as a kid, and I wouldn't build my home beside it, as a lot of people of the Shamrock area wouldn't. My point is, that wouldn't be compatible. Would bring the value of homes down, which means less tax money going to the city. Another point is, the extra traffic would put a strain on existing infrastructure, particularly Shamrock Drive, which is ill-equipped to handle increased traffic without upgrades, which would cost the city a lot of money. The point of entries to the proposed development would be three entries to Shamrock, which will become dangerous. And I think it's time we think about the safety of our children. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Malcolm Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, can you give me your address, please?
1149 Lake Ridge Crossing. My wife always tells me nobody can hear me when I'm talking, so...
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. See, the original plan on this was presented a few months ago to the Planning Commission, and it incorporated three phases. The first phase was this 5.2 acres that we're talking about now. There was the other 20 acres. That plan, Phase One, had 18 units, five acres. That's what we're discussing today. The Phase Two had 32 units. Phase Three had another 18 acres. This plan was unanimously disapproved by the City, by the zoning commission. The most I'll today is for Phase One of that. Councilman Townsend, to answer your question, I don't know what would restrict coming back two years from now and trying to rezone these other two, and you will have a precedent set of whatever you do tonight. Would that be a precedent for those other five acres? Certainly, casting concrete. Sanders, the units he's talking about building up there, nice-looking units, but they're ranging anywhere from like 1,600 square feet. He said 3,000 or something. Depending on what the person that's bought the lot, bought the lot. So, you could have 18 or 20 units up there that are 1,600 square feet. Perfect for rental. Perfect for rental. Think of an investor that wanted to buy a couple of them and use them for... Madisonville, what's that? If I had one of them, I would advertise it in the Evansville papers, and I'd say, "I have a unit, 150-acre lake. It has a kayak livery front of it, walking distance to an 18-hole golf course." Speaking of the mic. And it was a good investment. This rezoning is approved. The Wesley Group will make money. Not necessarily, but there's a good chance surrounding areas could lose money. Councilman Stevenson, to answer one of your questions, you were talking about Lake Ridge. Oh, it sounds it. Sorry. Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Kaufman? Thank you, sir.
Heath Robertson. Mr. Robinson, can you give me your address, please?
1142 Lake Ridge Crossing.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Speaking kind of on behalf of the Homeowner Association, I'm the president of Lake Ridge Estates. We were talking about all these homes that are needed in Madisonville. I happen to look and have been looking on Zillow and other sites. Homes for sale in Madisonville, we have 136 on Zillow, just in the greater city of Madisonville. And if you go out 30 minutes from Madisonville to the center of Madisonville, you have over 300 homes for sale. Unfortunately, they're not selling. He's proposing this for affordable housing for Madisonville. They're $300,000, $400,000 buildings. That's not affordable housing. I know we have a lot of industry coming in. People that are coming into these jobs are not gonna be able to afford these houses. I'd like to reiterate, they're talking about a strain on Shamrock Drive. There's no sidewalks there. I go down that road every day, seeing old people have to dart to just get in their mailboxes. It's dangerous, not only for our children, but for the elderly that actually do live on Shamrock Drive. Concerns about our water supply to the city. If we build there, it is on a hillside, like they did said. The hillside directs directly into the lake. I'm not against any type of development, but the comprehensive plan had it agriculture for a reason. All of a sudden, it was voted down one time, voted in this time. But what has changed in the comprehensive plan? What changed out there? It doesn't meet the aesthetic of anything that surrounds it. Connected housing or unconnected housing, smaller housing units compared to the housing that is around there. They say it won't lower property values, but there's a high probability. I speak on myself this, saying, "I don't care if he develops it, but make it with the aesthetic around the area." Make the houses 27 to 3200 square foot on at least an acre lot that looks like the surrounding areas. That's all I have to say.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Aaron Johnson. Mr. Johnson, can you give me your address?
796 Shamrock Drive.
And raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Mayor and members of the city council, I respectfully ask that you overturn the Hopkins County Joint Planning Commission's decision to allow zoning change from agriculture to zero lot line for the 5.2 acres of property at the end of Shamrock Drive. This property is a partial of the 24.82 acres that was brought before the Hopkins County Joint Planning Commission in July of 2024 for a zoning change from agriculture to planned unit development. And the Planning Commission voted to deny the zoning change by unanimous decision. It was stated that the request is not in agreement with the future land use map, and no major changes have taken place in the area. The zoning request was forwarded to the city of Madisonville with an unfavorable recommendation with the finding of fact that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with existing land uses of the area and is not in agreement with the future land use map as depicted in the comprehensive plan. Only nine months passed between initial 24.82 acres amendment, which enclosed the 5.27 acres, and the approval of the small portion. During that time, no significant infrastructure, demographic, or environmental changes are documented. The land use context appears to have remained largely unchanged. If larger parcel was found to be inconsistent with the future land use plan and surrounding land uses, then the smaller parcel logically shares the same characteristics. My question to you is, why was the small parcel of zoning approved? What caused the Joint Planning Commission to unanimously approve the second zoning change? What does the future look like with this type of inconsistency with changes in the future land map and the comprehensive plan? The area where the property is located has been a single-family home for many years. The family who lives in these neighborhoods are hard-working citizens of Madisonville, who have a lot invested in their homes and properties. Allowing this type of development in our neighborhood may, in the future, lead to loss of property value. Would you like to have this type of development looking down on your 750,000 to $2 million home in the Lake Ridge neighborhood? There are other properties in the city and surrounding area that would be better location for this type of development. All I ask is that city council look at the facts, respect the citizens that live in the surrounding area. If you were at either of the Hopkins County Joint Planning Commission meetings, you would have seen that the room was full of the area home. you would have seen that the room was full of the area homeowners who were opposed to zoning change. Thank you for your service to the City Council and your consideration for the information I provided.
Anyone have any questions? Thanks, sir.
Ms. Harmon.
Ms. Harmon, can you give me your address, please?
1361 Carroll Gentry Road.
I'm sorry, what? 1361 Carroll Gentry Road. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I'm here to present a petition signed by 181 people who are opposed to the proposed zoning change of the property from agricultural to zero lot line. Our concerns are as follows. The impact on infrastructure. Shamrock Drive is not equipped to handle increased traffic congestion that this zoning change will cause. Using the Trip Generation Manual from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, 20 more houses will increase to 144 more trips up and down the road a day. This is against the character of the neighborhood. The type of housing being proposed is completely inconsistent and is incompatible with the established character of the surrounding neighborhoods and adjacent properties. The introduction of smaller lots and attached homes contradicts the serene and spacious atmosphere that defines the area. This goes against the comprehensive plan. We believe that there is more justification within the comprehensive plan against this zoning change that outweighs the evidence presented from the plan regarding the need for more housing. The comprehensive plan in Hopkins County designates it as agricultural use, both in existing land use and future land use. There have been no significant changes in the area since the comprehensive plan was adopted that would warrant going against the plan in regards to zoning the property. According to the plan, higher-density housing should be focused closer to the city's core and radiate out from the central business district, not in this area of low-density residential zoning. The existing land use element of the comprehensive plan states that all development should be located adjacent to compatible land uses and incorporate proper transitions like land uses densities and buffers between non-compatible land uses. This zero lot line district is incompatible with the surrounding zoning, and there would be no buffer. The City Council in the past has not approved proposals for residential developments with higher density in this area of the city. What makes this proposal different from those that have not been approved previously? We do not believe the developer has proved that this change is warranted. For these reasons, we do not support the zoning change that is being proposed. And I have the petition and signings.
Anyone have any questions?
What was your address again?
1361 Carroll Gentry Road.
Last name?
Harmon.
Last name?
All right, thank you.
Kent Jones.
Mr. Jones, can I get your address, please?
817 Shamrock.
And raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
I simply want to just briefly reiterate the same points I made in my formal appeal and email to the council members dated May of this year. The Planning Commission, I think, in my opinion, did not go with the comprehensive plan for several reasons. Number one being, according to their own existing land use element of the comprehensive plan that states all development should be located adjacent to compatible land uses and incorporate proper transitions between non-compatible land uses. The zero lot line classification is incompatible with surrounding zoning and would have no buffer between Lake Ridge Estates and the newly zoned area. Secondly, the comprehensive plan states that changing zoning should be for economic and physical or social changes within the area that are not anticipated. There have been none. Also, according to the commission's own comprehensive plan, higher-density housing should be focused closer to the city's core, where there's in walking distance of goods and services for these individuals. This, of course, would not be happening if this were in this area. Also, there's a comprehensive plan states development should not be near environmentally sensitive areas like Peewee. Comprehensive plan also states that under the section Single Family and Multi-Family Residential Criteria, the connectivity between subdivisions should be encouraged, and subdivisions should avoid designs with one point of entry or egress for emergency access. Allowing this development one point of access clearly goes against the comprehensive plan as it would create a troublesome precedent. In this particular case, this would form a three-legged intersection between the Versnig subdivision, Shamrock, and the new... ...oath division. The comprehensive plan was created to appropriate zone areas within the city and county. This decision to change the zoning does not meet the criteria from the Planning Commission's own plan, and to allow this change would invalidate all the reasons for the comprehensive plan itself. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thanks, sir.
Johnny McGary.
I'm sorry.
Johnny McGregor.
Mr. McGregor, could I get your address, please?
1001 Lake Ridge Crossing.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
About 10 years ago, my wife and I moved back to Madisonville, and we had been gone for quite a while. And we moved back and built a house on Lake Ridge Estates because it was a beautiful area. It was a great investment for us, and it was a great investment for the Madisonville city, which my wife loved. She went to school here, she wanted to move back here. I moved back here because whenever you come in on Shamrock College Drive, it's a beautiful drive. Homes are very well-maintained. There are no apartment buildings, there are no duplexes or triplexes or townhouses in the area. That's the reason that I decided to build back in that area. Our concerns as taxpayers is how the rezoning of this property to zero property lines in our neighborhood will affect the value of our homes. With townhouses and duplexes, triplexes, whatever's going in there, there are no buffers in between that and our neighborhoods. So I see that as a conflict in the comprehensive plan. It doesn't meet the characteristics of our neighborhood either. Multi-living and high-density living in a low-density area will affect us in many ways. Noise, pollution, lighting pollution, possible security issues in our neighborhood. Parking on the street could be an issue with duplexes and townhouses. In most cases, the duplexes and townhouses, they're owned by the individuals, and they're well-maintained until they are purchased and put into rental properties, and then they're not maintained as well as they are, which would be an issue for our property values. It's a very unique area. I'm sure all of you know you live here. It's a beautiful space with Lake Peewee out there. I'm not opposed to developing in buildings, but we do feel that low-density areas should be built with low-density single-family housing. I heard him say townhouses and single-family dwellings or whatever, but to me, that's not a single-family dwelling. It's a beautiful home like you see in our area out there. I appreciate your time and just take the concerns that we have as taxpayers and citizens of Madisonville.
Do we have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Dan Harmon.
Mr. Harmon, your address, please?
1361 Carroll Gentry Road.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I represent the membership of Lake Shore Country Club, the private institution that is adjacent to this property and will be greatly affected by the proposed zoning change. We are adamantly opposed to the zoning change. The proposed zoning change is contrary to the existing comprehensive plan for Hopkins County and is not at all compatible with the surrounding properties, including the country club. I would highlight Goal Seven from the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, which states, "Expand and improve recreational and entertainment opportunities by supporting private recreational opportunities that increase tourism." Lake Shore Country Club serves as both a recreational and entertainment opportunity and increases tourism with its events year-round. Changing the land use around the country club, like what is being proposed, will impact the country club in several negative ways. These includes the overall appearance of the area, the natural surroundings of the club, which is one of its most important assets. Zero lot line developments are allowed to have a setback of 10 feet from the exterior property line on the sides and the rear yard. That would potentially lead to only 10 feet of buffer remaining between someone's home and the country club property. Negative impacts also include the additional traffic that this development will cause at the country club's entrance, since the property has no option but to have one entrance and exit point that is directly adjacent to the club's entrance. The planned development, the planned development's single point of access goes against the comprehensive plan as stated under the section Single Family and Multi-Family Residential Criteria, where it says connectivity between subdivisions should be encouraged and subdivisions should avoid designs with one entry-exit point for emergency access. By allowing this development one point of access, not only set a precedent that goes against the comprehensive plan, you also create a safety issue. The safety issue is created will be a three-legged intersection within a curve where the access for this development will meet with Shamrock Drive, the Versnig Drive, right at the entrance to the country club. Also, the current condition of Shamrock Drive at the entrance to this development is poor and cannot withstand the additional use of construction vehicles. We do not believe the developer has proved that this zoning change is in the best interest of the neighborhood or the country club. For these reasons, the 144 members of Lake Shore Country Club are adamantly opposed to this proposed zoning change and request that City Council not go forward with this zoning change. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Is all your 144 people against it?
Yes.
You don't think that this would benefit your membership some too?
No, I don't.
Really?
No.
Okay.
That would assume that everybody in Lake Ridge Point was a member of Lake Shore Country Club, and they're not.
Just a question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions? All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
If I might speak to...
Speak into the microphone.
Yeah, speak into the... Pardon my... Just some points of information. Talking about the housing shortage. The Madisonville Economic Development Commission, or Corporation, was part of getting a study together of housing, the needs for the next five years in this community, which laid out specifically across various income levels and the anticipated housing needs that validate the shortage that we have. The Corporation has also, has been the source of information that we're aware of, that one of the situations we look at in Madisonville is that probably half or more of the people that work in Madisonville don't live in Madisonville. And the reason that they don't live in Madisonville is they can't find housing. And, you know, the whole effort of economic development to bring in industry, commerce, business is not just getting them to come here, but we have to have things to attract them. The workforce has to have a place to live. If you don't live in Madisonville, you're not likely to eat out in Madisonville, buy retail in Madisonville. And, you know, we have... Trying to address those needs as well as the quality of life. We're doing real well on quality of life with the park system, Mar Park Arboretum, city park system. But we lack retail. We're making some headway there. But, you know, for those to be sustainable, we need to have more people living in Madisonville. As someone pointed out, the growth in population in Madisonville has been relatively stagnant. I know when we were looking at problems with the subdivision regulations and impediments to development, we hadn't had a single development since 2003 when those regulations were... That's a long time. And when we talk about changes to the area involved, it's part of the decision point in these matters is, you know, well, there has been a change. There's been an increasing intensification of the critical shortage of housing in our community. So, you know, those are facts that need to be in the mix as well. And this company that does this study, they're professionals. They have a track record. They've been over the whole country. And there's just a few states in the far northeast that they haven't been doing this for years, helping communities anticipate what their targeted housing development is going to be. So I just wanted that backdrop of information to be introduced there as well.
Any additional comments from the council? Todd, can we get some clarification, please?
Two things that I want to touch on. A planned unit development is typically mixed-use. It involves, or can involve, commercial, residential. And so originally, July of last year, when that planned unit development was applied for, that was 68 residential units. At any time somebody has a PUD, they can come back with a revised development plan, and they can, you know, ask the Planning Commission, can they add in a retail store? Can they add in any type of commercial? So a PUD is open to mixed uses throughout the PUD. So the Planning Commission, of course, didn't feel like that was a fit, the potential for mixed uses down the road. And plus 68 homes or 68 structures with one ingress egress. So I just want to clarify some of the differences in what the Planning Commission looked at with the first request versus this request. So that was one of them. A PUD can be a mixed-use development with residential, commercial structures. And as far as the compatible uses and the buffers, buffers, we look at those when there is an incompatible use, such as residential next to industrial or residential next to commercial. But this being residential next to residential, that wouldn't be something that we would ever typically require a buffer for. If this were to be approved and later on in the development plan process, if the Planning Commission felt a buffer is necessary, that is something they can ask for in the development plan. But that isn't typical with a residential next to a residential development.
Any additional questions? Thank you, ma'am. Any additional comments from the council?
Mayor, I would like to move that the council move into closed session in accordance with KRS 61.8101J as we make deliberations on the matters before this hearing to prepare for making some kind of response.
For the record, I would like to say I will not participate in the deliberations because of potential conflict of interest due to my ownership of a lot in Lake Ridge Estates, which is adjoining the parcel being discussed.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. If they're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Here now, we will move to the council chambers and the conference room.
Just before we get started, just to reiterate to the crowd, we had to have four council members to override the zoning amendment recommendation from the Joint Planning Commission. I've asked every council member to state their vote when done with roll call and that reason behind so we have a finding of fact.
Mayor, a move that the city council override the recommendation of the Hopkins County Joint Planning Commission regarding zoning map amendment 2025-02 and deny the proposed amendment. This motion is based on the fact that none of the findings required under KRS 100.213 have been met specifically. The proposed amendment is not in agreement with the comprehensive plan. There have been no major changes in the character of the area that were unanticipated by the plan or there is no demonstrated need for the amendment that was not anticipated in the plan.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Who did that?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Kim, can we have a roll call?
Marvin Hightower.
I need understanding on the motion. That we, the motion is to override.
Motion on the floor is to override and deny the amendment.
Zoning map amendment.
I agree, I'd say yes, in that, and I have a unique position in that I was a, or I'd say no to overriding the amendment. Zoning commission made because, like I said, I have a, I have a unique position in that I was part of the zoning board when we voted it down. And to me, there's not been significant change enough for us to change what we did originally. I don't think that this proposal is in agreement with the current comprehensive plan. I, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't believe that in the strictest sense that there have not been sufficient or major changes enough that warrant the current zoning desire. And therefore, there is no real need for an amendment to, to change the zoning.
So for a point of clarification on your vote, sir, you are voting yes to the motion for denying the amendment.
Denying the amendment and the recommendation of the zoning commission. Is that understood?
So I think we're, we still need some clarification. Are you in favor of the Joint Planning Commission's decision?
I am in favor, I am against the, the Joint Planning Commission.
Right, so you are voting.
I understand that there's not been enough changes in the comprehensive plan as far as, like I said, I was there when we voted it down. And I don't think that there have been major changes or sufficient changes in the strictest sense that warrant us changing what we originally, or what the zoning commission originally voted for. And so I'm, I'm against their recommendation. Is that plain?
Yes, we will, we will mark you as a yes vote.
To Adam.
To Adam's motion.
Okay. Adam.
Yes. I do not believe that the proposed amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. As the comprehensive plan talks about all developments should be located to adjacent compatible land uses and incorporate proper transitions when it comes to density and the potential, the density of what a zero lot unit is. Thank you.
Larry Knobzenger.
Yes. I second that motion for Adam anyway. I've studied about this and read more than I did when I was in high school. And these people come up with some good things tonight, too. We've got some good information, some of the best I've read. And I just think it needs to be, you know, this amendment's not in agreement with the comprehensive plan, I don't believe. And I think there can be some adjustment to it. That's the reason I voted for it. I voted yes with Adam.
Okay. I'm with Adam. Frank?
I vote no. I believe that the zoning map amendment requested is in concert with the comprehensive plan as well as being responsive to the changes, major changes since this comprehensive plan was developed with regard to the critical intensity of housing shortage in our community. And this, that this project is compatible with the adjoining land uses to it, to the south and the east as well as the northeast. So I'll vote against this motion.
Ms. Glenda?
I am voting against the planning commission's recommendation. I do not find that it is in agreement with the comprehensive plan and that major changes in the area maybe not anticipated in the plan did exist. So based upon my findings, I would vote yes, is what I would vote.
So we have you as a yes for this motion?
Yes, for the motion.
At four to one.
We have a count of four to one to the motion against the Joint Planning Commission's decision. Motion passes.
At this time, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Motion, do we have a second? Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Turn.